Good evening. May I welcome everyone to this meeting, the Audit and Governance Committee, taking place from Walton Street to Winchester Guildhall, the time is 6:30pm. My name is councillor Margot Power, chairperson of the committee. May I advise that the meeting is being audio recorded and livestreamed from the council's website, and a video recording of the meeting is being made and will be publicly available shortly afterwards. Please can everyone ensure that mobile phones and other electronic devices are on silent or switched off entirely? In the unlikely event that it is necessary to evacuate the building, the fire alarm will sound. Please follow any instructions given to you by staff or fire marshals. All fire exits are marked by green exit signs. Please proceed quickly and calmly to the assembly point, which is in Abbey Gardens, and do not use the lift. Thank you. We shall go to the agenda. We start with apologies, deputy members. This is Graham.
We've had apologies from councillor Miller and councillor Leaming. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I understand councillor Crass will be five minutes later. Any disclosures of interest, please? Thank you, ma'am. Chairs announcements. I would only advise you that there's going to be a reachable forum of audit committee chairs southeast, and I will be part of that forum on your behalf. Thank you. May we return to the minutes of the meeting on 16th of December? Are they agreed? Thank you very much. We have councillor Horrill will speak when we reach the agenda item 13, so there's no public participation, and we come to the auditors and your report, Mr Suter.
Thank you very much, and good evening, members. The purpose of the report here this evening is to communicate the results of our audit to the wider stakeholders in the council, for example, the members of the public. Similar to the previous annual audit letters, the report here summarizes everything we have done under our responsibilities under the 2020 Code of Audit Practice. The key change is that within this audit's annual report, we now include our value for money commentary. So that includes our description and view of the council's arrangements in how we've ensured value for money on behalf of the taxpayers and its community. And that's included in section four of our report. The commentary may not prove overly illuminating for members of this committee, as I expect it will refer to masses and processes for which you will be familiar at parts of the council, for example, when we describe the role of the committee or the governance processes. But however, as I mentioned before, this is aimed at the wider stakeholders, and hopefully will summarize those arrangements in a readable form that people can access in one place. The report also contains information on the remainder of the audits, which is the audit of the financials statement of accounts. We went through that information in detail in your November 2021 committee meeting, and that information is now condensed into the key summary aspects within section three of this report. So no new information, and we do confirm that we did indeed give an unqualified opinion on the council's accounts. The report broadly includes the 2021 audit. However, we still cannot certify the auditors completed. This is because the Treasury still aren't in a position to publish requirements for whole of government accounts process, and therefore the National Audit Office can't provide us their group instructions, of which we're required to undertake. So unfortunately, we're left in a little bit of a limbo until that occurs. And the latest position we were given was that not expected to be signed off before the end of July. We don't expect any issues to occur, given the council's historically below the threshold of detailed procedures. So when we do have those instructions, we'll complete the work and then certify the closure of the audit. Given we've provided lots of this information before, and all the value for money of agents commentary are, or should be, familiar to the officers, we don't propose to go through any of the key areas of the report. And so that's what I really wanted to highlight as just an introduction. And James, I would be happy to try and answer any questions that members may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Suter. Mrs Sutterford, would you like to speak?
No, nothing further to add.
Thank you very much. Just one question. We are asked as part of this paper to confirm our acceptance of the annual audit letter. Can we actually do that until we have clarity from the government?
Yes, because we're asking you to accept this letter. Within that, we try to be clear that that's the position we're in. We can't certify the audit, so yes, you still can accept this letter. The fact that we haven't been able to do whole of government accounts has just been clearly explained as a matter of fact. So you should be able to accept this, yes.
Thank you very much. Members, do we have any questions on this report? Councillor Godfrey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On page 22 of the agenda, the significant risks, valuation of property, including investment property. I wonder if you could explain further about the misstatements, what quantum of the misstatements were, and why these are not considered to be materially incorrect. And secondly, perhaps to explain why we've still not yet seen the asset strategy document, which I'm hoping will come to this meeting.
Would you like to check that one, Mr Suter?
Yes, so the audit differences regarding investment properties. If I could direct the members' attention to page 24 of the pack, we set up a quantum there. So we had a misstatement, an overstatement for the antiques market. We had understatement, overstatements of the properties on the high street, and we had an understatement on the car parks. Now, the position of the net position of all of those issues was an understatement of 370k. That was below the materiality we set for the audit, and therefore we concluded the accounts were still fairly stated. And with regard to asset strategy, I'm afraid I can't answer that one. That's not a matter for the auditors.
I think both of you will check that one. Thank you.
Jay, it's a kind of firm that the draft of the asset strategy is being prepared, as we speak. We did agree that we would meet with a formal group of representatives from this committee. And I'd get to arrange that, so I apologize for not getting that date in the diary here. But that date will be, or options for dates will be circulated within the next week.
Thank you, Mr Botham. And councillor Gummel.
Yes. This is a rather odd one, but it is a technical one. Going concern, when would you consider that a council is not going concern?
It would be an incredibly unlikely scenario. What we're more interested in, actually still have to go through a going concern process. What we're more interested in is the clarity of the disclosure. If there's anything the public should know. So for example, is there any uncertainty over the cash flows of the council that might be in, has to contain its services? That's what we're really interested in terms of disclosures here, rather than the principle of being a going concern or not. So the risk is always focused on having clarity of disclosure. Has the council essentially got enough cash? Or are there concerns such as, to give the example not related to this council, there's potential for section 1.1.4 notice, or concerns over the efficiency of the reserves? That wouldn't be highlighted in this important document to the public, so they can understand that in context of reading the finances.
Section 1.1.4 notice?
That's the required notice that the council is essentially running out of money, that the section 1.5.1 officer would have to give to stop all discretionary expenditure and just concentrate on the absolute end, while the strategy is sorted out to resolve financial problems.
And who would be, I mean, technically, I would see accounting departments, if they were running out of money to that extent anyway, wouldn't be the type that would disclose it. So it would, yes. I, I, I'm sorry. No, I'm chasing, I'm chasing a mouse up a hole, but it is a case of, that's the sort of thing that you would not see. If somebody comes to an audit with clean and open hands, they're going to disclose everything, and everything's there to be rosy behind them. But if anything's not, then I can see, because I've seen it happen, it doesn't, you don't come with clean hands. You wouldn't go to disclose, to raise a section 1.1.4.
That is our job, to review it and ensure that if that is the case, if there are some circumstances, they are properly aired and disclosed. So that is the auditor's role, to pursue issues like that and make sure either the circumstances aren't there, or if they are, that it's properly aired.
Mr Botham.
Chair, just to, just to comment on that. Part of the statutory duty that I have as the section 1.5.1 officer of the council would be to make sure that the finances are sufficient to meet the demands of the council. When it's not, then I have an obligation to report that and take immediate action. And a 1.1.4 is the ultimate sanction effectively that is open to me. I suppose part of my duty is to make sure that I said that before auditors highlight those sort of problems. And would be one of the controls that we have for controlling the expenditure of the council.
Thank you, Mr Botham. I have a question on page 23 regarding the COVID-19 related government grants. I understand that some councils shied away from the complexities of administering these grants. Have you seen that, or is that a rumor, a rumor and givel gabble?
I certainly didn't see anything of that sort at Winchester. Some have been some issues elsewhere in terms of how they're counted for things in the agency or principal, but nothing significant of course.
Thank you very much. Any more questions on this report? Any debate? Oh, sorry, Mr Councillor Godfrey, did you?
No, I worry about technical things, divel that all.
I'll explain to you later. It's suitable for the public domain, but not possibly for the whole committee. Any debate, councillors? So we are asked to review this report and confirm our acceptance of the annual audit letter 2021. Is that agreed? Thank you very much. Right, moving to agenda item seven, the internal audit plan. Mr Harvey, are you planning to join us? You are with us, thank you very much.
So my battery, I'm shocking on my thing nowadays. It's no one uses it anymore, it's something else. The first paper I've brought for your attention this evening is one that you'll formally require to approve, which is the internal audit plan for 2022-23. The plan's been developed, taking account of all key corporate documents, such as the risk management strategies, and it's been developed in consultation with officers, and obviously through to your staff this evening. The plan, which is on agenda page 57 to 64, gives the proposed plan for 2022-23, and also an indicative plan for the next two years. What we have projected forward is an IT plan for the following two years, just because it's such a rapidly changing landscape. We will continue to be as with officers and bring any variations to the in-year plan, with future year plans to the Audit and Governance Committee as usual. Where we've got an indicative scope, for example, fire management stability and energy management climate emergency on agenda page 57, we've outlined that for you. And we've also outlined where the plans link to, for the corporate risk registers and all the council plan objectives, just to make sure that obviously we're focusing on all areas of significance that members will hopefully want our attention over. I can pause there, Chair. We'll be happy to take any questions if there were any.
Thank you very much, Mr Harvey. Councillors, do we have any questions at this point? Councillor Godfrey.
Mr Harvey, thank you. The plan sets out a quite different number of audits or audit areas. Will there be sufficient resource available to you to perform those resources, those audits in the years that you run at the time?
Absolutely. So we will plan on an indicative basis. We endeavor to keep our audit data, we've scoped the audits accordingly in order to contain within the agreement of contract hours. We do continually to assess the plan to make sure it is proportionate. So members who have been on the committee for quite a while will remember that we did significantly reduce the plan a few years ago from the original position when we first moved across, because obviously we don't want to over audit. And in the next paper that we'll discuss, which is the internal audit charter, that gives me the requirement to raise any concerns with internal rigid, if I feel that I'm not given sufficient resource in order to fulfill what I feel is the audit obligation. And should I not be able to reach a resolution with Richard and Lisa, then it gives me unfettered access to the chief executive and also to the audit committee to say that actually I feel that I'm not being given sufficient resource to do the work. That really isn't the case. I think that the plan is proportionate. We wouldn't seek to cover every single area, but what we do do is keep a little bit wriggled within the plan each year. So for example, next year, there's a couple of reviews that are more service orientated, where it's felt that some tension would be useful.
Thank you, Mr Harvey. Any other questions, councillors? May I ask a question on page 61 regarding the to be confirmed in 23, 24, and 24, 25?
Yeah, so on the IT side, we wouldn't look to look too far ahead. One, because it's such a rapidly changing landscape, and a lot of it would be dependent upon what the council chooses to do with this sort of IT strategic direction. We look to rely on our work in around those areas. So there's been a couple of reviews that have been identified for next year. There's potential to include a third review should it be needed. And we'll just look to see what developments happen within the council and along our future year coverage accordingly.
Councillor Cutler, I know we've set aside some money to enable remote working more effectively. Are you comfortable that those latter years remain to be confirmed?
I think, I think Mr Harvey's response is perfectly sensible on that. As we develop the remote working and invest over the next year, it will be that changing landscape that he talks about. At the moment, it's very difficult to assess what would be the most appropriate thing to audit.
Thank you, thank you very much. Any other questions, please, on this paper? And any debate? We are asked to approve this plan. Is that agreed? Thank you very much. The internal audit charter is on pages 65 to 78, I think. Again, Mr Harvey, I think it's yours.
Thank you, Chair. This again is one that the committee's asked to formally approve each year. It's a requirement each year that I'll bring to you in the internal audit charter under the public sector internal audit standards. The charter really outlines our roles and responsibilities, the roles and responsibilities of offices. Gives us free and unfettered access to all documentation, outlines the sort of reports that you can expect from ourselves. In essence, the charter is unchanged since 2018, '19, because the standards haven't been updated since 2017. So it's in all aspects, the document is exactly the same as what's been brought to you previously. Never had any issues with it, so hopefully it's still fit for purpose. And it has been, when we went through our last extended assessment in 2020, as part of that extended assessment, the International Institute for Internal Audits checked all of our documentation against all aspects of the public standard standards, and that they were found to be fully compliant. So hopefully that will give the members the assurance that it contains what it does need to contain. But again, we're more than happy to take any questions on it.
Thank you, Mr Harvey. Do we have any questions, members? Are we happy to approve the internal audit charter? Is that agreed? Thank you very much. Moving on to the next agenda item nine, planning for the audit of the 2021 accounts. Mr Botham, I think you're introducing this.
Thank you, Chair. Another report that usually comes in this cycle of meeting that sets out the planning of the accounts, potential changes that may be coming. It is a nothing to report type of report, as far as I'm concerned. There are, you know, there are no significant changes to accounting standards that will be, be going into the audit for the 21, 22 accounts. And we have recently had a consultation from SIFR on some potential changes that they feel might assist the process, because so many councils are not completing the accounting process in time. And as highlighted in the paper, they've suggested taking a different approach to valuations and some other areas. Our view is that doesn't really help us. We still feel that the auditors would delve deeply into those areas anyway. So, and so we were, we were suggesting, I think that would be for motion, Chair. The, the reporting, as I said, has a report, so they're the same as for the previous year, aiming for completion by September for the sort of accounts. Discussions with Ernst &amp; Young would suggest that that's unlikely to be achieved again, if you're in the same position for the 2021 accounts. But certainly that's the target that we will aim for.
Thank you, Mr Botham. Councillor Gummel, you have a question.
Yes, I can understand that the standards and the goals are not changeable over the time. How do you feel the practicalities, though, of working with it?
Of working with it?
Basically, I think I'm asking more for the whole two years, because the standards won't have changed, I understand from pre-closing days. But we've actually done the work through COVID, and we're still coming up the other side. So how are the practicalities affected?
And main effect has been around the, we've built a good relationship with the external auditors through that time. We do, we have our challenges around some, you know, areas of work. We feel either duplication or are not in accordance with the PSAA and objectives. So we've had those robust discussions on that. But broadly, that process has worked for us. I think it's more of a challenge for our external auditors capacity wise. So, you know, we've had, those plans have changed several times throughout the last year, 18 months, where, you know, their ability to keep to the timetables that we've agreed with them, that's difficult. And it remains to be seen whether they're able to do that this year. Their resources remain stretched in the sector. But, but we have an agreed plan.
I was actually trying to get to how has it worked with home workers with the accounting function? I mean, it's one of the easiest things to move out of the offices, but it can be one of the more difficult things to trace things through when problems arise. So I just wondered if you had any feedback from that.
I think they've worked extremely, extremely well with that. Yes, they have noted exactly that, that challenge of, you know, where teams are sometimes a little more difficult to contact. You know, so there has been some time related information, several requests for the same thing. But that's inevitable, I think, from that working practice.
Any more questions, councillors? Oh, councillor Godfrey.
Just one very quick one. We have had quite a lot of debate in this committee about the costs of the auditors. Obviously, going up from what we expected. Do we expect it to go up again this year, particularly in light of inflation increasing significantly? And just the ongoing difficulties of remote working?
Mr Botham, is that for you?
It would be probably more for Ernst &amp; Young, actually. And they, no indications of any significant changes, so we are expecting a bit of a similar level to last year, so significantly above the contracted agreement, the original contract agreement. There are no significant new areas of thought for the auditors to, that need focus on. So we aren't anticipating any claims in that area, but they, they, yeah. I suppose, yeah, they will determine that from their first view of our draft accounts. So they may feel there's an area of concern that they need to dig deeper. That's the sort of thing that can affect you.
Sorry, and we're budgeted for that increase over and above the fee that we expected previously?
Well, we have, yeah. We've included the additional provision in the general fund budget that was approved by members.
There is a SIFR review, I think, hybrid on to the problems with costs, is it SIFR or was it PSAA? I have the link at home. I'm very happy to forward it, councillor Baggery, for your question. Thank you.
And on that issue, we have recently, last week, completed a survey from the PSAA as well, who will continue to monitor this very closely and take a reasonable arbitrary view of the disputes that have occurred.
Thank you, Mr Botham. Any more questions, councillors? Any debate? We are asked to note this plan. I'll be happy so to do. Thank you very much. We come to the government's quarterly report. Mrs Kirkman, I think you're introducing that for us.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, members. I'm pleased to report that there are eight audit actions that have been completed since the last meeting. And something that's new in this report, just to highlight on page 93 of your papers, there's a Homes England audit for you, for your reference this evening. Officers, as always, happy to answer any questions. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mrs Kirkman. Officers, could we have questions, Mrs Kirkman? Councillor Crass.
Thank you, Chair. Apologies, first of all, for being delayed from the start. And I also need to carry a conglative interest in terms of my personal but non-prahitional interest in terms of my problem with K&amp;G.
Thank you. Mrs Graham, do we have that?
Yes, thank you.
Carry on, councillor Crass, thank you.
Thank you. It's something that was referred to in the Dwyer report, and I didn't miss the trick and pass then. But they referred to, on page 36, the retention and disposal policy in published for staff. Policy not been recently reviewed or refreshed. They seem to refer to it in terms of the internal audit rather than the audit. So that seems to be a bit of a gap perhaps, but I couldn't see it in this report. I wonder if she is.
Mr Harvey, do you have a?
I think councillor Crass, we're referring to the invasion governance record retention review that was actually undertaken last year and featured in last year's annual report and opinion. That report has that this week, it's now been finalized, so it will feature in the action tracking section progress reports going forward. It's actually included, but we're going to scroll through. The line in the plan appears on page 106, where it still shows a draft report of limited insurance. We go through the insurance pins, it says, includes the summaries included in last year's annual report and the opinion, which was brought to the committee back in June of 2021. As I say, that report's been finalized this week, so it's going to be tracked through in the usual process for some updates.
Thank you, Mr Harvey. Do you have a subject, or do you? Councillor Crass.
I guess, is it possible to share an early insight into internal report? Or is that something that we wait for in due course?
So that's, there's the summary of the issues arising from that report was brought to the committee back in June of 21. So that's already been provided as part of last year's annual report and the opinion. So I've been agreeing the corrective actions responsible officers and time scales and relative warranty with the officers, just say it's now been sort of finalized. The original observations that were made at the time would still obviously stand, and those actions have been taken since to mitigate the issues arising. But the summary of all of our observations given last July.
Apologies, I hope it's understanding, I'm just confused as to why you might raise that as an issue. Thank you.
Thank you both. Do we have any other questions? Councillor Godfrey.
In section 11.3, the name of gifts and hospitality, our members, this identifies a donation to Trinity Winchester. And I'm not quite sure why this was accepted as a declaration of gift or hospitality. And the three items under officers' gifts and hospitality seem factless and would suggest a level of reporting more in disgust and in serious intent. I wonder if we've got the policy wrong.
Mrs Kirkman? Yeah, thank you, Chair. Thank you, councillor Godfrey. The financial limit is different between officers and councillors, and it's £5 for officers. And I think officers are always there on the side of caution and will declare it, because £5 is a small amount. So that's why those have been declared. When I saw the glass of soft drink, councillor Godfrey, I did think, was that truly necessary? But it depends where you were drinking that glass of soft drink, as to how much that might have cost. So those were all the declarations that were made. I did also make inquiries as to the 18th of October. There was a picture that was donated, councillor Godfrey, so that's the gift. And then, as part of the gift of the picture, there was also a donation that was made to a charity of that member's choice, and Trinity was chosen. So that's a clarification. So the picture was deemed to be a value of more than £50. And there was that donation that was made that was an approximate value of £100. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mrs Kirkman. Any other questions?
Yes, councillor Mento.
Head next door to the whole question. Question of...
Could we have the page number, please?
Page 110.
Yeah, councillor Mento, could you put your microphone on, please?
Sorry. Page 110. And it's the 5th of October, parish council. And it talks about through the maximisation stage. I don't know if it's a maximisation stage, it's unfair.
Councillor Mento, I know it is one of those legal words, but maximisation simply means that when you have a draft report, it is sent to all those that are named in report for their comments. And that is the maximisation stage. So it's part of that process once an investigator has completed their report.
So, Mrs Kirkman, I do have a question on the content of the report. On page 104, the limited assurance on the disabled facilities grants with 13 high management actions. And there's a lack of... The latest invitation to tender is overdue. I'm a little concerned in that area. And I wondered if we could have an update on how we are progressing on those actions, or would that be unfair?
I have met with the service leader and the corporate head for that service to review progress of those actions. I think the initial, I did challenge them on the initial, they were too ambitious. And I think they agree with revising. By the time the final report is published, then I'll be more satisfied with the dates for that. So work is in progress. I don't know whether Mr Chaney can send me around the procurement process, the plans for that.
Yes, we haven't. I've got a meeting in next week to meet with the leads from the disabled facilities grants team to talk about commencing that procurement process. Thank you very much. Thank you. Any other questions, councillors? Any debate? I think we are asked to accept this, are we not?
Chair, because of the specific reference to noting the outcome of the Homes England audit, that's an additional recommendation that you don't normally have. So just bring that to members' intentions on that paper, on page 85.
Thank you very much, Mrs Kirkman. So on...
If I may, I think we've been particularly concerned in previous years about the time it has taken to resolve many of the complaints. And I think we ought to note that we're now down to a backlog of 18 months, which is progress. And I think that progress is welcome. I just hope that it's possible to further reduce that time period and bring complaints resolution to a more normal and welcome period. But I think we also, Mr Godfrey, should be commended for making progress on this difficult subject.
I think we're all very grateful for seeing certain items disappear off this list after some years. But yes, there is a lot of work to be done, and we recognise that. Thank you very much. So moving to the recommendations, councillors. We are asked to note the content of this report and the progress against the internal money options. Have you raised any issues? I don't think we've had any. And we note the outcome of the Homes England audit and the successful completion of the valley new build scheme, with, I think, general sigh of relief. A congratulation to the team on that. Thank you. Is that agreed? Thank you. And we move on to the local... I beg your pardon. And we move on to the local code of governance. Mrs Kirkman, again.
Thank you, Chair. So members, this is the framework that sets out the system and process, culture and values by which local government organisations are directed and controlled. In appendix one, you have the code and appendix two, the governance framework. And just to put all of this into perspective, the next stage is the annual government statement. This comes to your next meeting as usual. And this is where we seek to identify issues and how they're being addressed over the subsequent year. So you may recall, last year, we added the public sector equality duty work to that list that needed to be done. I'm pleased to say I think that will be removed from next year. But just so you know the sequence of reports as they come to this committee. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mrs Kirkman. Do we have questions, members? Debate? Are we happy to approve the local code of governance? Could we have some noisy agreed, please? Thank you very much. And moving on to agenda item 12, the risk management policy. Mrs Tramal, I think you're introducing this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So it's recommended, members, that this will continue to comment on the cabinet report, cap 2338, which begins at page 12.9 of the JDPAC reporting. Appendix to the cabinet report is an updated risk management policy for 2022/23. And this sets out the council's approach to risk management, details the arrangements of managing risk, adding rules of corporate risk register. The main changes to the risk management policy over the course of the last year and as a result of the annual review are set out in the table at 12.8 of the report, which is on page 1.3 of the JDPAC. And there are no proposed changes to the council's risk act on export remains as moderate and overall. Have to take any questions?
Thank you, Mrs Tramal. Do we have questions? Councillor Godfrey?
Thank you, Councillor Mento. The impact of corporate risks on projects and departmental programmes of work, how is that taken into account? Where will we see the impact of corporate risk register being applied? And how is that done by Miss Councillor?
Thank you, councillor Godfrey. Mrs Tramal?
Thank you. So there is one of the corporate risks, I'm just... I'm just trying to... But I believe there is a corporate risk around project risks and programme risks. So that is updated quarterly by ELB and then brought to this committee quarterly. There is also internally, we have the programme and cap pack, programme and capital spend board, which review project risk registers independently to these corporate risk registers. So we have a process in place to review project and programme risk registers separately.
Councillor Godfrey?
It helps. I think the risks, as the council will know, is something that we all worry about, and quite rightly. And it's important that, as corporate level, we should see these reflected in normal departmental activity. And we make sure that, for instance, the observation I had about CRO 10 last year, about climate emergency, and how the risks associated with that, particularly corporate risk, were reflected in risks of normal day-to-day activity. I'm not sure I would know where that is occurring, where that consideration by each department is taken with corporate risks.
Chair, that would flow through our service planning process. So our corporate service plans include a risk session, so they would need to consider the corporate risks and other risks in the delivery of those plans. I don't think they come through a committee process at the moment. So I'm going to do that.
We have, so, as Mr Botham has just explained, the service planning, annual service planning, we have operational risk registers that each corporate service maintains. We have a process in place, which is in accordance with the risk management policy. They are updated quarterly, and they are all within our risk management software system and are managed by that process.
Are you content, councillor Godfrey?
No, I am content, but responsible. And it's good, but there is a... Councillor Godfrey, isn't it? But yes, it does flow down. Thank you.
Thank you, members. Any more questions on the risk policy? And councillor Cras?
Chair, thank you, Chair. I've got a convoluted one, as usual.
Could we have a page number, so we know where to start?
We could have a page number. That would be very helpful. Would it be... Would one eight one be appropriate? Are we on that way?
We have it.
So interested in decisions made by the council challenged due to lack of strong evidence base, customer-side occasion, particularly with residents. Asking is in mindfulness of the motion that we're being asked to look at as well. Just apologies for this clarification. I want to go back to the previous paper to sort of understand. When we looked at the core principles, the corporate governance framework, do you understand that what I see in appendix two of the corporate governance framework is the results of that assessment against our principles? Or is that, I think I heard you saying, come next meeting, not taken?
Yeah. The answer's not really, councillor Cras, because the framework is a central framework that we then assess our governance around. And this is how we apply our assessment of risk. So when we look at the next report, where we identify issues, if there was a significant increase in legal challenges, but that could be a possibility, is something you would identify. You can identify either that through the governance framework, or you can identify that through the risk matrix. What I would say is, though, there hasn't been a significant increase. So I'm just trying to give an example there of how I relate that directly to that specific risk on page 181, in terms of those legal challenges against procedural irregularities.
Okay. So would you mind bearing a bit, Chair?
Please carry on, councillor Cras.
So I'm interested in core principle two, openness, page 134. How do we ensure an open culture through demonstrating, documenting and communicating from the council's commitment to openness? So that's a core principle that we are saying that we accept and embrace, and that's how we are going to demonstrate openness. And also talks about engaging, conversing with stakeholders. So that talks to the evidence that, I don't think we're saying we can demonstrate, but we're saying that that's the evidence that we will seek to comply with. Whether or not we're actually doing that is another matter. But that's technically what we should be interested in if we were engaging stakeholders. But we're not, no one's actually assessing whether we are actually doing that, are we, in that governance framework, which is saying if we were open and transparent, that's what we would do. No one's actually said we're doing it.
Mrs Kirkman, I think the difficulty is that councillor Cras is pointing to one decision that's made out of hundreds that might not completely comply with every statement of evidence in our code of corporate governance. So it's not that every single decision. I think there is an element of being proportionate to these each time. And I mean, I might ask councillor Cutler, but I don't think, you know, our cabinet colleagues would agree that we've not been open and transparent.
Councillor Cutler, would you like to comment?
Well, I have a little bit of difficulty understanding where councillor Cras is coming from on this. Page 146 is part of the, of our governance process, which is reported against. So therefore, if it was felt that there was a significant failure to comply with that code of governance, that will be reported at this meeting. And that's where concerns come from. It seems we've gone backwards a bit, but then we're also linking the fact that when that governance report comes out, it may impact on the risk assessment process as well, because we've identified something that has perhaps significantly gone wrong in corporate governance that then increases the risk in the risk register. But that's all hypothetical until we see the governance report at the next meeting.
Chair, I have thought of an example that might be quite helpful in terms of, I referenced we put the public sector equality duty on there last year. So in terms of the framework, councillor Cras, there's a SIFR supporting principle about respecting the rule of law. And how we do that is that we have our policies in place. And the reason why it was identified as a risk last time is because we knew we needed to review and update the public sector equality duty policy and action plan and objectives that this council had. So that's why that went onto our list of issues last year. That's why I think it can come, it will probably come off for the next one, because we have completed that piece of work. So that's just an example whereby there was, there's something in terms of a SIFR supporting principle around the rule of law, something that last year we identified as a piece of work we needed to do that would sit within that framework, and therefore, that's why that was listed. I hope that's helpful. I was thinking a live example might be...
It is, thank you. And I apologise to the Chair and everyone for jumping around a bit in pieces. What I'm trying to do is to reconcile the motion, which speaks to being open and transparent, to the risk of us not being open and transparent, to the core principle, which we, there's no comment about. the assertion that we are open and transparent. I'm just looking to thread the three together. The framework which says, and our assessment of the framework, which says we are open and transparent, the risk of not being open and transparent, and the motion which says we need to be more open and transparent. Just to look and see where that all flows through. Thank you, Chair.
I may refer to this on the next agenda item. And perhaps at that point, we will seek enlargement. Is that fair? councillor Godfrey?
I move on, but I would point out the motion doesn't ask us to be more open and transparent, but to confirm commitment to be open and transparent. I think it's a slightly different subject. I think this paper actually does seek that. But it's, it is that open and transparent a great idea of seeking. If I could move on to risk appetite on pages 169, 170. I wonder, in this very new format we had, which I adopted last year, could you tell me, has the risk appetite changed for the coming year? Because it's not clear in the paper.
Councillor Cutler, thank you.
Having now on second cycle, I still don't understand what most of these praises mean. I'm sure it was a weakness of a previous structure. But where we have the different definitions and those have been applied to be key, the planned priorities on page 170. I have no idea whether being open, risk appetite level four, what that means in terms of the level of risk. But has it been too unclear for any tangible examples of where that risk appetite has been exercised? Or for any of the other definitions being applied to those priority areas?
Who would like to take that one? I see councillor Cutler.
Well, councillor Godfrey is asking for very specific examples in any specific decision as to where, where it fits within the risk management strategy or the risk appetite. I think the risk appetite is a very, very difficult thing to define. And I've had this, these arguments with the previous structure. We, we felt it was not entirely fit for purpose and tried to approach it a different way. But as, as the text points out, it's not a single fixed concept. So there will always, in any decision, be a range of risks. But what, so we're talking about the broad, it's very difficult to define this, the broad approach in each of those areas. So sometimes there may be some areas where one would take risks, but probably not with a high financial cost to that risk. So it's getting that balance right. So if we're talking about within your services, your voice, we're cautious. I would say we're cautious because services to residents, core services, we do not want to risk things going wrong. And I will give you an example where things did go wrong because we weren't cautious enough, which was getting the waste calendars out last year. That's the reason why it, that that risk was not taken into account to the extent that it should have been, that there was a risk that printers would fail to deliver to the Royal Mail at the right time. And so, yes, I mean, that would be an example of, of one of those areas where I certainly was not pleased that enough caution, enough of a cautious risk approach was taken to that particular item. I will give another one in that we were very, have looked very carefully at garden waste renewals this year because it's not something we can risk going wrong because it is one of the core services. So when you come to it being sort of open to a higher or a greater risk appetite for, say, homes for all, it is because we need, we probably need to take a greater innovative approach on getting the housing delivered. And therefore, we're likely to take greater risks, I think. But my view and cabinet's view has been very much that as a public service, we shouldn't be in the high-risk areas. And that's the particular view of this cabinet.
Thank you councillor Cutler. Would an example of being open to risk be a funding stream arrives, much heralded, that allows us to produce zero carbon homes? Would you be open to considering that as something we should investigate as to how, how we could deliver against such a funding stream? Should it arrive on our doorstep?
I mean, that's also an interesting point around how it's very difficult to compartmentalize things because under the climate emergency, we are taking a moderate risk. We want to succeed in what we do. So we're not going to take risks in getting things wrong. So we need to know that the houses that we built were going to be energy efficient, but we could take the risk on the finance, I suppose. Yes, I mean, that may well be the case. I think, I think you're illustrating the difficulty of defining it too tightly. And I think that process of looking at risk appetite is, is very, very difficult. It just gives a good indication of where you sit. But I don't think it's one of those things you can pin down.
Mr. Godfrey, thank you.
I mean, one, an example that would illustrate the, the, the open approach under homes for all would be the current house for the housing company or a vehicle to provide alternative tenure housing. We know from the work we've done so far that that's a marginal project. We're still progressing it based on the fact that there is a risk of potential losses and that. But on the basis that it's, it's, you can't run a local authority company without, without a degree of risk. I think a cautious approach would be to not progress those sort of options, which would then impact on an ambitious housing program that the council has. So when that paper finally comes forward with the detailed business plan, that would be for members to determine, is the degree of risk in that paper, you know, openly reflecting the open approach here? Or is it verging into Hungary, which would be, which would not be our risk appetite?
So perhaps it's more better, better described as open-minded?
Possibly, possibly it is. And one of the things I want to add is that we are currently looking at improving how risk is defined in reports. Because certainly there's some concern that it's, we've talked over the years as we've developed risk management policy, you know, from the times when I was, I was chairing this committee, that councillor Godfrey was very enthusiastic about developing risk management as well, how difficult it is to embed it across the council. And so one of the areas that needs refreshing is how we look at risk for each report. Because at the moment, there are times where it looks like a tick box exercise. And I think both Liz Keys and Amy are working on how one can improve that, which may involve actually providing the, the box for each report of where the risks are, what the likelihoods are. And but we're just trying to see how that can be improved. So that continues to embed risk management right through the system.
So it would be useful to have the same approach at all levels of the organization? councillor Godfrey, are you pleased?
No, I'm, I'm grateful for the discussion. It is not a black and white subject. I do believe in, where possible, to a consideration of management by risk, which is a difficult process and certainly is not something which is a binary answer to all problems. And we need to be flexible in that approach. So I'm grateful about that.
I think we're all agreed on that. We've spent a lot of time on risk management over the years, haven't we? Over the last 10 years, I think. I will continue to do so.
But I think auditors will tell us that there are a lot of councils that haven't done a lot of work on risk. You know, we were quite advanced. I think four or five years ago, we may, we may have slowed up. I don't know. It'd be interesting when you're attending your audit chairs forum to, to investigate that. Because that's one of the things, again, I recall from EY meetings of audit chairs, were quite a few who'd never heard of risk management. So we are pretty well developed, I think, compared with many.
The chair of that, one moment. The chair of that forum is Joseph Holmes. So he may well weep when he sees me. Mr. Harvey, would you like to make a contribution on how other councils manage risk?
From a positive perspective from Winchester City Council, it's the fact that you've articulated your risk, you bring a risk management strategy to the committee each year, you report on your risks each quarter. It gives a far greater degree of transparency than I have observed in some other authorities. The fact, yeah, there's, there's been a lot of interest in working now over the years that I don't necessarily observe, perhaps where there are very, very clear links between your service risk registers or operation risk registers and strategic risk registers that are reviewed on a quarterly basis. Again, I don't see that level of embeddedness in certain other authorities. I quite often struggle to see with risk management with Winchester, where further you could go with it compared to some other authorities. It's, I quite often refer other organizations to yourselves as good examples of the level of information that does come through to committee. So I think it's a positive, certainly very positive from my perspective.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Councillor Galloway, I think you have a question.
Yes, I think it's a favorable attitude to take to, to try and see risk. However, I mean, it is always the unknown unknowns that catch you as COVID has proved. I mean, where's that now risk management prior to it actually occurring? Which is why we're trying to do the risk management. We're trying to foresee any risk coming forward that could be of damage to our council and avoid it or mitigate it. And unfortunately, you know, you can't see everything.
But surely the fact that you have assessed your risks across the organization and have an intent, have a plan to mitigate those risks does leave you best prepared for dealing with the unexpected?
No, no, it doesn't, it doesn't. It gives you foresight on things that you expect to happen. But your unknown unknowns will always come and knock your knees out from underneath you.
Councillor Cutler, thank you.
Thank you, Chair, for letting me enter into the debate. I mean, I would argue that the pandemic wasn't a known unknown, it was a known unknown in that it, the possibility of a pandemic is in our risk register. And we had a business continuity plan that was based on an event of that type. The detail wasn't known, the broad effect wasn't known. But because we had the business continuity in place because we recognized that risk was there, this council didn't have to suspend services, managed to maintain services throughout. Whereas a lot, at least a lot for a short time, suspended services. And now I think that's actually a very good example of where that risk management approach had actually helped us because it was recognized that there could be that catastrophic type of event. I mean, there are different types of catastrophic events and some are immediate and some are long. But we had, we had a plan. And I think Mrs. Kirk probably could elaborate on that. But because there was the plan there, because it was identified as a risk, pandemic and other things that could interrupt business, you then got out of it a bit better. It's never perfect. And but the real known unknown unknowns, by their very definition, we can't even talk about because we don't know what they are. Whereas we can talk about the potential for there being epidemic disease because we actually understand the idea of it, even if we hadn't ever experienced it.
And I would point out that it's been the highest likelihood in the local resilience forum plans for at least eight years and probably 10. So there is no excuse for unpreparedness.
Yes, except that we all expected it to be H1N1 and not an unknown, which also went back to, was it something that was dropped in the lab? The whole, the whole conspiracy theory that's come forward as well. So, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. And just to, just to come in on what councillor Cutler's saying, we did have an influenza pandemic business continuity plan. So that's a plan that councillor Cutler's referring to there. I have to say, we did pick it up and we were using it. And then it changed quite rapidly. And that's simply because of the longevity of COVID. Even in the initial months was, was far exceeded anything that was in that plan, which is why we rewrote the plans for something that was much longer. And we did have sign off on that with a substantial assurance in terms of those plans we put in place. I think that's why we also kept some of the headings in our risk plan as they are because risks such as staff capacity, business continuity, all related to how we responded in a pandemic. So we kept the generality across the risks rather than going very specific.
Thank you, Mrs. Kirkman. Thank you. A very interesting debate. Thank you, members. I don't think we have anything to add. Are we happy to? Oh, we just have to review and comment. And I think we've given that a good going over. We're happy to move on? Thank you. That takes us to the notice, notice of motion, agenda item 13. Mrs. Kirkman, I think you're introducing this.
Yes, thank you, Chair. It's just to confirm that audit governance was asked to consider a response to the notice of motion that was referred to this committee by council on the 12th of January 2022, set out in full, including a minute extract on your agenda paper. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Kirkman. I would add that Mrs. Kirkman and officers have drafted
I would add that Mrs Kirkman and officers have drafted a possible way forward for dealing with this matter, but I would invite Councilor Horrell to come and address the committee.
Thank you, Chair, for allowing me to speak to the committee this evening. On the 12th of January at council, Councilor Godfrey and I put a motion forward. This council asked that the council commits to clearly demonstrate that it is open and transparent in its decision making, specifically by properly consulting all councillors and the public before making any significant decisions about council projects or other major financial transactions. We didn't say at the time, but whether they are required formally or not would be an addition I think we ought to consider. Secondly, we said stopping the use of non-disclosure agreements that councillors have been required to sign before being able to see some council or committee papers and to cancel any indemnity clauses in such non-disclosure agreements previously signed by serving councillors. We sought agreement on that evening across the council on how we can all demonstrate our commitment to show in an open and transparent manner that we are always acting in the best interests of those who elected us. Our electors expect us to be honest, behave in a sensible and honourable way. Accepting that there will be some occasions when commercial or personally sensitive matters should not be discussed openly, the expectation should be in favour of disclosure. We are in public service and the public is paying for what we do. They should know what we are doing with their money. So eight weeks on from that meeting, we received Terms of Reference document today, which sadly keeps this very important motion down the road until June or July. I'm asking this committee, why is it so difficult to answer the question posed at council? My request, Chair, is to act with haste and confirm that we are open and transparent, that we are always acting in the best interests of those who elected us by saying tonight we agree with these two specific requests, which were just two of the four we presented. You've already confirmed this evening in your discussions your core governance principles. You've touched on the whole issue of open and transparent activities about consultation. And this motion was at the very heart of that approach. So Chair, I'm urging you to act with more haste than the terms of reference indicate, although I think we're grateful for that outline of action. And I'm asking that this committee make a statement of intent this evening on those very core principles that I would be actually horrified to think that we did not all stand by. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Horrell. Councillors, how would you like to move forward on this? There is a good deal of work to be done to respond to the work that council have given us. And I particularly draw your attention for the need to be regarding how it would be implemented, how those changes will be implemented and what we're doing already, which is why we suggested a task and finish group. Could we have questions?
What proposal is this?
Oh, you may. Councilor Godfrey, I met with officers earlier this week and we suggested that we address the job that we had been given by council by forming a task and finish group. Mrs Kirkman has very kindly drafted some terms of reference so that we could move forward with the work to be done.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Perhaps this demonstrates the inadequacy of the current approach, that everything is being done behind closed doors. And I don't believe that, as Horrell suggested, being the long grass is an appropriate response. To come onto committee and say, well, you have decided outside committee without telling the committee what it is that's being proposed in sufficient time or at all, it seems a long way to proceed. Because I have not received a notification of this proposal. Unless it's arrived in my inbox in the last day, I haven't had a chance. Secondly, the proposals in the motion were fundamental questions rather than specific in most of their intentions. And we heard earlier that Councilor Crass believes we are open and transparent. Well, I think we ought to be telling council to confirm that because we gave specific examples where this was not the case. And we have seen that on last week around the local plan, where the administration is making decisions and notifying others about, in this case, parish council, about decisions to proceed without consulting councillors first, apart from a very late notification of a briefing on Friday evening, because they hadn't thought to do it. It is not going to require a task and finish group to say this is inadequate. The fact that we are, the administration is choosing to make decisions behind closed doors and not telling anyone about it and not consulting councillors, such as the decision to sell the River Park site to the University of Southampton, without a discussion with the general council, with either group or councillors across the floor, is a prime example. And we should be saying that is not what we should be doing. And that doesn't require a task and finish group to discuss and define it, it's just to stop doing it and use a non-disclosure agreement.
Councilor Godfrey, I have to stop you there. You and I were both in scrutiny last week, where it was made very clear that no decision on the disposal of the leisure centre had been made, that they were merely proceeding to investigate the options available to all partners.
Madam Chair, I'm grateful for the subsequent decision that was unmade and made again. But back in November, the decision to sell the land was made and the cabinet agreed that what they're going to do is go to an agreement to sell. And that was without any prior notification or discussion with the good councillors or with the public. There have been some discussions since and that's fine, but the initial approach, which became a subject of the discussion on the 12th of January, was an example. NDAs, we should not be using them, there's no need for them. It is a, as we've identified as terms of those NDAs, is a form of bullying, of repression, which we should not be applying and is almost certainly unlawful. And try and stop councillors having lawful access to documents used for decision making. That does not require a task and finish group. We need to send back comments after the review at this meeting about the motion.
Mrs Kirkman, thank you.
I'd just like to clarify a comment made about me saying that the council was open and transparent, I didn't exactly say that. I raised a question as to why we hadn't questioned the assertion that the council is open and transparent, which was made on page 124 as part of the core principle two, it was asserted that we are open and transparent within council. And that we will agree, so I'm just questioning as to whether that is something that was actually acknowledged. Thank you.
Mrs Kirkman, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Perhaps there are a few points that I can clarify to assist the committee this evening. Councilor Godfrey, the draft terms of reference were emailed round by the Chair at 10:30 this morning, if you haven't got those, but it's just to clarify, I know you're saying that the task and finish group is behind closed doors, but the terms of reference do say that the conclusions and recommendations of the task and finish group will be reported back to the Audit and Governance Committee at its next meeting for consideration and decision. Clearly, that consideration and decision will be open and fully in public unless there is any exempt information, because I don't know what those recommendations will confirm. The other point, Chair, to clarify, so there was an amendment that was moved by council, Cupper and seconded by Councilor Thompson at the meeting, at the council meeting, and this said, when referring the matter to the Audit and Governance Committee to review and make those decisions and recommendations, that in their consideration, the Audit and Governance Committee review the legality, practicality and resource implications of these specific proposals. And perhaps those don't relate as much in respect of the consultation and NDA points that were raised, but probably do relate to the provisions in the points made around exempt papers and the recording of discussion submissions and decisions by all meetings attended by any person outside the city council. So I think that there were some extra layers, Chair, there for the committee to consider how best they can work through those. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Kirkman. Councilor Crass, thank you.
I'm not quite sure what order we're doing this here, Chair. But I'd be interested in being part of the task and finish group if you're opening that up. I am interested in properly consulting all councillors and the public before making any significant decisions about council projects. I'm very interested in that, that's what I've stood for. So, Sutaki, I guess I've struggled with the word properly. What does the word properly mean? And that's what I would like to explore. And that's where my question is in terms of the government's framework and the risk bridge to come from, so I can understandably find what the word properly looks like. Thank you.
And would you also like to understand the words significant and major? Which can't be that definition?
But if you're being detailed, Chair, then yes, but I started with the word properly, for sure. But so, yes, you're right, there are words that need defining, because otherwise you have ambiguity and people get confused and you create more uncertainty because people don't know what words mean. So you could be right, Chair.
And our job is to provide assurance to council, which is what we do. Councilor Gennett.
Well, I can give you one example of properly consulting the members. Is the lack of decisions coming forward to full council that we've seen in the past for a whole discussion through the whole council of those members that get to full council, which we have to admit is around about 99% of us getting to full council, who cannot get to things that happen during the day. So necessarily, at this moment in time, working members of the council are excluded because they can't get to the daytime meetings, they never get to get to Cabinet, so they're never able to take part unless it comes before a separate committee and it doesn't always come forward. So that's what I'd like to see happen again. It may meant up longer meetings, but the meetings that we've had with less than two minutes actual council, what I call council work coming forward, have been rather too many in this recent past.
Mrs Kirkman, I think the matter of what comes to council is actually defined in the constitution, is it not? Yes, Chair, that is correct, yes.
However, we would have seen more things come forward for discussion in the past and it does not happen now. And if that needs to be changed in the constitution, then I feel it's something that needs to be changed.
Chair, I would simply say that the constitution in terms of those matters that are decided to be within the revit of full council did not change during the constitution review of 2019. So there hasn't been a change to the constitution. I don't believe there's been a change to any law, because if anything's required by law to go to full council, so there's been no additions to that list. So the list was the same a few years ago than it is now. So where there is any business that is triggered to be a decision of full council, it has absolutely gone to full council.
Thank you, Mrs Kirkman.
Then why do we not see the word at council? And we have it.
Councilor Bent, Councilor Bent, thank you.
Thank you. Chair, I'd like to second your proposal that we set up a task and finish group. I agree with a lot of these statements here, but we've already looked at A, talked about the word properly, significant and so on. B is a possibility that there must be some reforms over there. But C, I don't know how anybody is expected to record discussions and produce evidence of these discussions, you know, many months on, because they might actually have some effect. It's a very pushy, washy sort of thing. Maybe more to it than I can see, but what that always means, looking at and the pieces taken of it and put into more definite statements. So I'm happy for some members of this group to sit down and pull these apart and then agree them after that.
Thank you, Councilor Bent, and Councilor Bent, please.
I want to warn them, Madam Chair. I have no idea what Councilor Bent is referring to. And what is it, he's referring to some document which is not on the agenda.
Do you have access to your emails, Councilor?
Yes.
If you look at the emails that were sent to you, and I am sorry it wasn't sent out yesterday, I was very busy yesterday, it poses that we form a task and finish group to work through the practicalities and steps to be taken in order to address this job that we have been given by council.
But you haven't done that. This is not on the agenda. It is not on the agenda, so you cannot be the staff.
On the agenda, we have... Let me find the agenda. To consider response to notice of motion referred to this committee by council on the 12th of January. And that is on the agenda. Now, we have undertaken some work with officers in order to have something to chew on at this meeting and decide if that is how we would like to proceed. Now, you have not seen it because you haven't been able to look at your emails today.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, it makes no difference whether I've been able to look at my emails or not. It is not on the agenda. We're discussing proposals which are not on and not being circulated properly. The subject of my comment behind closed doors discussions, not referred to other items, is the fact that proposals have been brought forward apparently and we are being asked to debate those and discuss those tonight without any prior knowledge of those proposals.
Chair, just to clarify, that A, B, C and D simply refers to the bullet points in the amended motion. So if you go through bullet points, they're not numbered, so it's just bullet point 1, 2, 3, 4, A, B, C, D, that's all what Councilor Bent was referring to. So that is in your agenda pack.
Do you not understand the principle?
We do, of course, we understand the principle, do not doubt, knowledge and understanding.
Are you not smacking everyone in the face with the actual insult of marching over the whole point?
councillor Gemma, all I was doing was pointing out that councillor Bentham referring to A, B, C and D for clarity is the bullet points included in the agenda pack which you have already received and apparently gone through tonight. That's all I was clarifying with that statement. But in relation to the proposals, while I think most of us will agree with the principles being put forward in the motion, there are details that we absolutely, and nuances that we need to grapple with. We can't simply agree these very broad-brush statements without properly understanding the implications of them. We don't understand the implications of what is a significant financial decision, where are the parameters around what is significant, who decides whether or not something is significant. We need to have that level of clarity. You're always talking about needing that certainty and clarity, and that is what that discussion would enable. We need to look at the implications of recording discussion submissions, decisions at all meetings attended by any person outside the city council. What does that mean? What does that mean in terms of data protection? What does it mean in terms of confidentiality? How do those aspects interact? How do we make sure that all of that works together in a legal way? We need to have proper discussion about that. Now, we can sit here tonight and we can do that, or we can have a proper discussion and then come back and report back on that. We need to, I do suggest that June is probably too long, and we should do this quickly because this is an important matter. We do need to make sure that these decisions are clear, they are open, they are transparent, but we need to have a proper discussion about it. We can't simply accept the motion as drafted, it's too broad-brush, the risks are too great to the council and to this committee.
councillor Godfrey.
If I may, Madam Chair, I'm grateful for councillor Bentham's comments, I agree with that. A debate and discussion should be properly counted out. So why isn't it? Why aren't we not debating the council motion, which was accepted across the whole, by the whole council, seven, eight weeks ago, and nothing has happened in the meantime, otherwise we would have it in front of us. But we don't have it in front of us. We are not able to proceed, we are losing, we've lost the opportunity to debate it tonight, without any proposal coming forward.
Well, if we were to start at the beginning, of course, we would discuss the definition of 'properly'.
Then I'll wish to simplify matters. The membership of the group on the second page of the draft terms of reference, this leads to the group comprising two political parties with a ratio of two Liberal Democrats and a Conservative member, there might be three or five members. I didn't quite get the math on that one, but if we have a group set up with two Conservatives and four Lib Dems chaired by yourself, that group of six or seven, I'm not quite sure who it is, go away and do the work, which seems to be this group, if I'm not mistaken.
It could indeed be these people. It would have to be four of us and two of the Conservatives. councillor Godfrey, councillor Godfrey, I'm very sorry that you didn't have the opportunity to say this, may I read it to you, would that help?
No, it is coming out of the left field, as I'm concerned, it has not been tabled at all this meeting. And, you know, the fact that you've had the opportunity to discuss it with officers prevents the rest of us. It is precisely the issue about discussion on proper consultation with councillors, but the motion was trying to, seeking to gain true confirmation of openness and transparency. And here we are demonstrating that the organisation does not support open and transparent consultation with councillors. It is a ridiculous way to proceed. If we're going to discuss each of the points and how we proceed each one this evening, which I thought we might be able to achieve, then I would support that. But I'm afraid to start debating a possible task and finish group, which is going to happen sometime in the future, does seem just a way of delaying any proper discussion.
I think Mrs Kirkman will show us a way forward. Thank you, Chair. Chair, the motion coming to this committee is up to the committee to decide how they wish to do that. So with nothing on the agenda at all apart from the motion, this committee could decide to set up a task and finish group to look at that. And at the chair's pre-meeting, which was only yesterday, the task and finish group was a possible option for that, and therefore I was asked if some terms of reference could be drafted in draft for consideration, because the chair did support that as a way forward for this motion. The terms of reference are based on the other Audit and Governance Task and Finish Group in terms of the workforce, and are also consistent with the task and finish group that the scrutiny department are looking at in terms of the mental health matters, because we're trying to ensure some consistency in terms of reference across these task and finish groups, bearing in mind that could now be three that are up and running, looking at various topics. Chair, it's up to the committee tonight to decide how they would wish to address the motion. Clearly councillor Godfrey expected that to be debated in full tonight. I can confirm that in terms of the points of legality, practicality and resource, that's not worked up fully by officers yet. Since the council meeting, I've done a full search with all officers who have been in the council for some time in terms of the use, whether we're calling the non-disclosure agreements or undertakings of confidentiality, and I have four examples of those dating back to 2017. So I am collecting the full details of those and the members that signed up to them. But what's interesting perhaps for members to understand tonight is, not all of those relate to pink committee papers. Some of those relate to papers that weren't either a committee paper or something under a councillor's right to know as set out in the constitution. So there are perhaps documents that this committee might like to see and understand why historically there were some non-disclosure agreements or undertakings reconfidentiality on some of those aspects. So they're not pink papers, they haven't gone through a committee cycle, yet some councillors wanted to see them. So there's just some nuances there that I think would be quite helpful for this committee to look at. In terms of the exempt papers, what I have sought to get from the Democratic Services team, they had done some work in terms of implementing a process for the review of exempt papers, I'd like to bring that to the committee. The other one, and this has just come from a conversation that I had with the councillor, where I hadn't appreciated that actually in mob.gov it's quite difficult to immediately recognise whether something's exempt or whether something's in white. When we used to have the stack of papers, it's really clear, isn't it, whether you're talking to something that's pink? And we've got some technical solutions, so it's pink on your iPad screen, we've got some technical solutions that we'd also like to present to the committee, where you'd say, that's going to give me a head open in two seconds Lisa, and that pink is awful, or whether you'd say, actually that's something that would be incredibly helpful, and the committee would support. So we have done some legwork behind the scenes in terms of how officers can offer some practical solutions to some of the difficulties that perhaps are coming out from this motion. So Chair, I hope that's helpful, just as an overview of what we have been doing.
Would it help us with the definition of 'properly major' and 'significant', because those are major starting blocks for me.
I mean, Chair, we do have significant decisions already defined in the constitution, we have key decisions. We can obviously look at those definitions to help members, and I can put, you know, I can put a pack together of existing definitions that members might like to look at, I can offer recommendations, certainly, but I do see, sorry, that there are some, 'properly', I think is my biggest concern, because what is 'properly' and is it proportionate to the decision being made? And if it's proportionate to the decision being made, is that because of its own financial value? Our key decisions are over £250,000, or were they effectable on my board? So we've already got some definitions that might assist, but the committee will need to look at those and decide whether they're the right ones in the circumstances set out in the bullets in the motion.
So in order to properly address these resolutions, we need, you need, Mrs Kirkman, to do some work in order to bring the existing definitions to us, the existing constitutional obligations, and how would the committee like us to proceed with those?
Chair, can I just add one more, we talked about the resource implications, because there are some staffing implications, particularly perhaps with consulting, but certainly with taking these matters to full council and there being a review every twelve months. You can see if you're starting to have that information available to all councillors after two weeks, there's a resource implication there and I would need to look at, because if things are coming in, I mean, information would be coming in all the time, we would have to be logging that, making sure it was within the two weeks of the meeting, if it isn't, what happens? And then reporting that to full council, because full council would decide whether these papers remain exempt. Are they exempt under the same statutory definitions of exempt papers, or are they exempt for another reason? And certainly then that's where you have the GDPR and data protection implications. So there are, you can see, you know, in talking this through, the ramifications are larger on those two in terms of resource and legality.
So members, if we actually look at each resolution, we have questions about the first, properly consulting all councillors and the public.
Can we just make these bullet points, the first bullet point wherever, and tell me the starting words, please, because I haven't got the, I can't see the email, I'm lost myself. Yes, agenda.
Agenda. It's under the amendment, so that would be A, B, C, and four, five, nine, I just did. And it's just a bit long.
Yeah, but quite, but referring to it is not, okay.
So we are asked to review that the council commits to clearly demonstrate open and transparent in its decision-making specifically by properly consulting all councillors and the public before making any significant decisions about council projects or other major financial transactions. How would we like to tighten up the definition of that to remove all ambiguity? What work is necessary by officers in order to support us in looking at that resolution? councillor Crass.
Sorry, Chair, I mean to be, let's say, I will draw. Is any work required? Or is it just a commitment by the council to ensure that the existing policies are properly applied? We are meant to be open and transparent. There are examples over the last twelve months where this has not been the case. Are these exceptions, or is this normal activity?
So we have a commitment to be open and transparent. Do we know what 'significant' means and 'major', because I do not.
You're not saying you don't know the definition?
I have read it.
I think Mrs Kirkman will be able to give you the definition of 'significant', I think she has already done so.
Chair, I've defined what's a key decision in terms of over £250,000 or affecting to all awards, as there's a significant officer decisions are something different and have different levels by which that has to be recorded by an officer. And councillor Godfrey, I'm afraid I cannot reel that one off right here by now, because it's used significantly less than our key decisions. So I can't tell you what that is now, but because we have significant officer decisions, if you were going to use the word 'significant', I'd ask you to use a different word that means the same thing, so that there can't be confusion in terms of the decision that you're talking about in this point.
Well, perhaps we should be using rather than the key, that's very clearly defined, as something which is important to our residents.
Mr Botham, are you bothering me or something?
It's answered the question about whether or not it is reasonable to expect public consultation on every item of spend of £250,000 or more. We cannot, we don't have the resources to all of that currently. Everything that has a major impact on the public, we would do, but every item of spend of £250,000 or more wouldn't necessarily be subject to a public consultation, as we stand upon.
Thank you, Mr Botham. I think we have hit our first starting block. Now, the question is, how do we best resolve this? councillor Crass.
So in terms of the proposal around how we resolve it, I do have a couple of issues with that. One is the membership of the group, as proposed. I don't like the idea of having one Conservative and two Liberal Democrats in a group. I don't think that would be appropriate, because they would just then report back to a bigger group, which is just double the size of the group. I think it should be everybody, two and four, I don't think it makes sense to do it smaller. And what's proposed is that we break bullets A and B into one meeting and C and D into another meeting, and each meeting is only an hour and a half. I can't imagine that maybe they're giving them an hour and a half. So those are my thoughts on the draft terms of reference.
Thank you councillor Crass. So we've identified more information we need on the first starting, and we agree that officers need to do some work in order to establish definitions. So before we move on to the methodology, councillor Crass, I want to establish what we need to know in order to respond to council. Does that make sense? Thank you. Taking the second item, within twelve months of decision being made, I think we're all familiar with the words, we have heard from Mrs Kirkman that a procedure has been identified but has not been implemented. Are we content that we should review that procedure in order to give our view as to whether it will meet the need?
Anything which comes out of the decision made seven years ago in the post-Cairn Lloyd Jones report, when it was agreed by a cabinet sovereignty at that time, that we would implement this policy, would be very welcome. So if something's happened now, that's good.
Mrs Kirkman. Chair, I'd like to comment that, obviously it was my predecessor, Joseph Holmes, that dealt with all of the actions that came out of the Cairn Lloyd Jones reports, but what I can say, well, all of those were completed. In respect of the exempt papers, there has been, and I can hand and heart say this, councillor Godfrey, because I'm the monitoring officer, there has been active challenge to officers around the level of exempt information. You know, it's easier for an officer to say, well, of course it's all exempt, when actually we say, well, that can be in an exempt appendix and the report be open. And I'm just going to use my fellow colleague, Richard Botham's words, when he said, you know, we've never had fewer pink papers than we have now. So I think that is the effect of the recommendations from Claire Lloyd Jones. What we're looking at now, Chair, is having a procedure that will actively prompt the author of a report to consider whether the exempt information in that report is still exempt. It's usually because it's commercial confidentiality. So that over time, and it will vary depending on the deal that's being done... So that over time, and it will vary depending on the deal that's being done, as to it no longer being commercial information. The author will need to confirm that it's no longer, legal will do a check, and therefore the pink paper will become an open paper. But what we can't do councillor Godfrey is just all do that behind the scenes and then not tell you we've done it. Otherwise, you know, what are you going to do? Fish through hundreds of exempt papers? No one has the time for that, at least of all councillors. So we would seek to put that into these quarterly reports that come toward it in governance. So we're staying to you and these are the reports that have been unexempt in this quarter. So that there is a public record of us doing that. And we really did feel that the quarterly report was the best place to put that. So we've done this work on putting a procedure together. And councillor Godfrey, you know, I am truly sorry we've not implemented that. But during the pandemic, you know, my Democratic Services team have, you know, pulled virtual meetings out of the bag in six weeks and it takes, you know, a lot more resource to run these meetings, trust me, than it does the meetings we used to have in the good old days. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mrs Kirk. So we need to look at that procedure and see whether we think it is proportionate and it's the right level of resource? That's the get on.
That seems to be a procedure that could be brought to this council, this committee, very quickly and part anyway as part of it.
Has an item brought next meeting? Thank you. Moving on to the third item, which is recording the discussion submissions and decisions at all meetings. Now, I have big problems with this because I have a street surgery. I will talk to probably 12 or 14 people. Does that constitute a meeting or a discussion? We certainly discuss things, but I am at a loss to understand what that actually would establish. But perhaps another person has a. Councillor Godfrey, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Perhaps you'd be offered a soft drink at a very expensive place or something similar. Because although there are, reading the motion in that way would certainly lead you to a conclusion that anything you say could be taken down and used against you. I think that clearer drafting of the motion might have eased your concerns and meeting the two parts together might have been, should have been possible, but it clearly wasn't. But meetings would lead to a decision. I think it really might be the intention of the motion. It says that as a fact. But we do need to record a, the discussions, meetings that we have with external agencies. That leads to a decision being made by the council, by the executive members, by the cabinet. So that we know what influence, what commitments are being made by, for a council, the organisation. And that we're not allowing external bodies to have a influence that is unseen. An example I would suggest would be discussions with our push partners over housing numbers. None of us, none of us see the record of discussions officers have with our push partners, whether we are an executive member or not. And we ought to. And this is the intention of the motion even if it's not, I say what the words say.
Mrs Kirk, when we'll begin.
Chair, it's actually, if you're indulging me, it's a question, but I think it's a question that's helpful to the committee. The two weeks councillor Godfrey, is that two weeks of the meeting or two weeks after the decision has been made? Because some meetings you won't know there's a subsequent decision coming. So I think it means two weeks after the decision. Am I correct?
That I think would be the sequel to the motion.
Thank you. So councillor Godfrey, sorry councillor Kirk.
Yeah, I just have a question on that one is that how does one know that a meeting is going to lead to a decision? And given, so any exploratory meeting you have on this basis means you have to record it. And then that does lead, I mean, I'm sure councillor Godfrey was a cabinet member for seven years. I don't know quite how long, but he seemed to always be there from the time that I first became a councillor. And I'm sure he spoke to lots of people during that time. And he'd recognised that recording every one of those conversations would actually lead to quite a lot of people not even talking to you, quite frankly. What matters is that the decision is taken in an open, transparent way. That the supporting information for that decision is open and transparent. The previous discussions, to a certain extent, are irrelevant in that case. And I do find that this particular bullet point the most difficult. We had already, Mrs Kirkman will remember, I had asked her about the exempt papers two years ago. The pandemic, as she said, got in the way. We've, I recognise the first bullet point needs a little bit of looking at what is meant by it. But this third one is, you know, and I have no problems with limiting the use of non-NDAs. I have no problem at all. This third point is the one that I cannot understand. It's the decisions that matter and as long as the decisions are taken in an open way with supporting information based on previous discussions. But actually recording everything because you never know what's going to lead to a decision, I find, well, just purely in terms of resources, it's just a nonsense.
Councillor Crass, thank you.
So there is something here. Human guards, the human process, for example, to prevent conflict of interest and non-tour decisions being made or 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 due to it being applied. So there's something here, but it doesn't, and I almost got it when councillor Godfrey was expressing it. But then I did, councillor Godfrey talked about officers as well. I got quite excited by the idea of recording officer conversations. So we would have all the conversations with officers and JLR when thinking about the proposal for the CWR, for example. So we would have, I mean, we could, because we've got teams, we can record all meetings. So that's where I think I got lost because there's something there in terms of integrity of like the human process. But then there's no limits on it. But it does, it would go into say other than the conversations we check out.
Which are in confidence. And that's why they're private briefing. How would you address that councillor Godfrey?
Sticking my shoulders, as it's not my job to address them. I think that if officers are having conversations with external organisations, every word should be properly recorded. Otherwise, it is totally inappropriate. If they're doing their job, then activities, I should say this as a council officer or an authority, must be recorded because you're held accountable for your actions. So it is appropriate that officers do record discussions they have with external bodies. Because otherwise, what are we doing, having a chimney? We could be the alternative. I think it is important that where those decisions become a lead to a decision, no, no, discussion lead to a decision, then these meetings should be known about. Even if they are exempt information.
I am confused, councillor Godfrey. That's amazing, that's incredible.
As a councillor, I feel I have enough paperwork already. I don't feel I need to know every single thing that's going on with this council. Some things I'm more interested in than others and quite happy to delve down to those steps. Others, yeah, I take part in the decision, listen to the best advice from people. But we can't all get involved with everything all the time. We just haven't got the time for it. I can't come up to the point of all this, keeping notes from every minute, every meeting goes on. The meetings that happen, they get shared with a smaller group of people. It might be across party, they may not sometimes. But they do get shared with other people for those to discuss. And I trust my fellow councillors to behave appropriately from that information they've got. And that's how we all should be behaved. I don't want to know everything. I haven't got the space in my head for it.
I doubt if there's enough space in the cloud to record all the conversations we have as councillors or officers. Councillor Gettle.
I have to say, I'm taken aback by councillor Benton's comments. You may not want to know about them, but others may need to. And at the end of the day, we are responsible for what this council does and what this council spends our, not members, our whole district-wide personnel to their monies. The monies are not ours. We have a fiduciary duty to take care of what we're doing. So the records should be there. Whether we want to delve into them or somebody else wants to delve into them, the records of a meeting should be there.
Councillor Gettle, can I ask you to consider two examples? We are spending public money when I ask officers to look at the housing case more carefully. That is a confidential matter between the person that asked me to help them with it. I cannot see any justification for recording that in any way whatsoever. Another example, I happen to be frequently spending my time knee-deep in the river testing inverters. And at those times, of course, I form a view on pollution. Should I be recording a record of the meeting or the discussions with the Environment Agency about the state of that river?
However, there will be a record. There will be, you will speak to somebody, someone will make a note of it. Or do you expect your considerations to be kicked into the long grass? There will be a record of actions taken from any conversation. I'll go back to something that goes with the PUSH comment. PUSH is a scrutiny group. Do you know to whom that scrutiny group reports? No, because it doesn't report to anyone. That's a question I ask every year I went on it.
Councillor Kirk.
Sorry, I've had difficulty with this. I know that the dig at PUSH is very specific. PUSH, well, we have the two members that I sit on the joint committee and councillor Benton sits on the overview and scrutiny committee. The minutes for both those meetings are published. Councillor Woodward, who chairs the joint committee, is not keen on extensive minutes. And so I would suggest that perhaps you could use your influence with him to ask him to put more detailed minutes on the website. I'd really appreciate that actually. But the PUSH, the PUSH meetings are open. And it's not, the decisions are not taken behind closed doors. That's my point. Discussions exist and ongoing negotiations. But at the moment, I've made it very clear when asked about it before, you know, it's ongoing, the work at the moment for a joint strategy. And I suppose this is the area that does confuse me is that in many cases, there are ongoing discussions until a proposal arises. And the details of that discussion actually can, being made public all the time, actually make it very often more difficult to reach a decision. What needs to be opened, I think, is what the proposal is and what the decision and what the basis behind it is. And so I just reached a point where I think that there has to be balance here. We need to be open and transparent with our decision-making. We have attempted to do that over the last two or three years by streaming all our meetings. Everything's published. The increase in openness and transparency over the last three years has been quite substantial. So I'm wondering why we suddenly have this pile-on about openness and transparency. We've been expanding, you know, I accept that we can always do more and we need to develop, but this implication that there is a lack of openness and transparency, when I think we're properly as open and transparent as this council has ever been. So from the point of view of this proposal, I think there are areas that we can look at and to take things further. But let's not, I mean, some elements of it just strike me as almost absurd. There are good points and bad points in this motion, which is one of the reasons why we didn't feel that it could be accepted at council and it needs the analysis of this committee, which is the most sensible committee on the council.
How may I comment? I don't know how we're going to resolve this. I mean, it's so vague, this resolution, as to be impossible to take forward. I can't record everybody I talked to at the street surgery and it would be wrong for me to do so. I just fail. Councillor Crass.
Thanks, Chair. If I can, use the bowlers to suggest something. I can imagine that there were some incidences that triggered this motion and these bullet points within this motion. And maybe it might help if there was those were made clear and we could do an analysis of those particular triggers. So we could be specific about incidences and do an incident analysis rather than, so we could actually understand what people have concerns about. Rather than not talking about the elephant on the table and just carpeting the whole council and everything. If we could talk about the incidents that generated it, maybe that would bring a bit more to life.
Councillor Crass, I think that's a good suggestion. Do we have those incidents behind that triggered this law?
In addition to the discussion points already raised tonight and on the 12th of January, we've talked endlessly about the River Park decision, which was announced without prior discussion with councillors. We've talked endlessly about the attempt We've talked endlessly about the attempt to suppress discussion about the business case for the Central Winchester regeneration proposal. They are prime examples in recent times that were the catalyst for this motion. Councillor Cutler needs to be open to the idea, but saying open and transparent doesn't make it so. There is nothing, in my opinion, which has changed over the last three years makes this authority any more open and transparent than it ever was. And I think that it should be something which, as councillors, we should be striving to improve on. And make sure that we are changing the agenda on this transparency more tangibly. But those examples, and there are others, of the examples which I would suggest are those we ought to be discussing in the context of this motion.
But let's get the examples you refer to. There is a commercial sensitivity. So the administration is responsible for running the affairs of this council. If a commercial organisation, or indeed a charity, or any other body, could not explore the possibility of a successful joint venture, we would never have any of those opportunities brought before us. And as councillor Cutler said, the important thing is that when we make a decision, all the factors are brought to the table and are examined and scrutinised. But that is at the point where we are moving forward in order to give parties certainty, not when options are being explored. Does that make sense? You do have to have commercial, you do have to have sensitive discussions with organisations which would not be in the public domain.
I'm sorry, madam chairman, you said, I quite perfectly understand it in a short speech. I'm not sure it is in response to the points I made, because in neither of the cases I cited was an external organisation putting forward commercial proposals.
Councillor Cras?
Perhaps, Chair, in the way that we have activities to take away and to work on, but it's A and B, maybe this is something we could work on in terms of bullet C, in terms of understanding those critical instances, understanding the challenge as to whether we are open and, or the council is open and transparent. And we can do some analysis on whether that's valid or not.
Mrs Kirkman, were we to analyse those two events? Would it be appropriate that that consideration be held in a public session?
Chair, this might be an unhelpful answer, but it very much depends on what you talk about, because with both of those papers, there was an exempt appendix due to commercial confidentiality. So if you were referring to those, obviously in the task and finish group you can speak openly, and then it's just about how we report that back to this committee. So we could talk of the generality around what might have been in those exempt appendices. We can do that in open and that would be completely fine, but it very much depends on the level of detail. And I would also say, if you wanted to do a critical analysis as councillor Cras describes, we would need to call additional officers to that task and finish group, because you would need to hear from the officers who were doing that work in terms of the decisions made around what's confidential, how they could engage in, and all of those things. So there would be additional officer involved in coming along to that session to be able to do that analysis. That's not something that Richard and I think, just the two of us, would be able to do.
So if we might try and move forward on this, are we anticipating this clause only refers to significant and major decisions? Have we established that to take it to any lower level would be disproportionate?
Are you referring to point three?
I am.
I think that is a reasonable interpretation of the intention intended.
In which case we could remove from this clause our discussions with the Environment agency, invertable samplers, the housing case from Mrs Smith, and so forth. I have never dealt with a housing case from Mrs Smith, I would like to point that out.
Why not?
I'm sure the opportunity will arise. Because that means we have to rely on our analysis of properly major and financial and significant, which we've established needs further work. Can we move forward? Non-disclosure agreements. I think, councillor Cras?
I would just say, move forward a bit too soon. So do we imagine doing that critical incident analysis? Or are we just going to define what is significant and major when it comes to the third bullet point? Or is that for the task and finish group?
It may not be a task and finish group. It may be a public meeting. We have not yet discussed that point.
I just want to understand some clarity about whether we are setting this subject to the definition of significant and major, or whichever words we wish to choose.
We have no definition of significant and major, because Mr Kirkman needs to do some work to find out what definitions already exist. We have not yet touched upon, and will not touch upon just yet, our review of the legality, practicality and resource implications. We will come to that in a minute.
Thank you, Chair.
Non-disclosure agreements.
Mrs Kirkman?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Members will all be aware, because I emailed the members, when I reviewed the non-disclosure agreement for the December Central Winchester regeneration reports, it was within 36 hours that I removed the need for the NDA, having undertaken that review both with the director of responsibility for that project under section 151 officer. Chair, I agree it wasn't necessary in that circumstance, and that's why that was withdrawn and declared null and void against anyone that had signed the non-disclosure agreement. Certainly, in looking back at historically what we've done, I have four incidences where we have used either undertakings referenced in respect of confidentiality on non-disclosure agreements, since there was an occasion in 2017, two in 2019, and then the two Central Winchester regeneration business case reports. So we have those in front of us. What I would seek to do, Chair, is put a bundle together of what those said, how they were used, and whether they were used in respect of a pink committee paper, or it lied outside of that. And if it lied outside of that, if the councillor didn't have a right to that information under the need-to-know provisions in the constitution, that's how that confidential information was released to them. But, Chair, that does go wider than the point in the motion that is simply talking around council committee papers. But clearly, what I want to put in front of councillor are all the examples of when we have used, whether you call them NDAs or confidentiality agreements, over the previous five years.
So would that enable us to form a recommendation as to whether NDAs should be stopped?
And that's where I would split it into two, whether NDAs be stopped for committee papers that have a process of marking them as being pink and exempt for reasons set out in statute, or whether there are other circumstances where it's information that's not contained in a committee report, there is not a need-to-know established by a councillor, but they still wish to see that information. Because members, when looking at that, may say that there is a requirement for there to be a confirmation that the confidentiality of that information is acknowledged, because they don't have a right to see that information, either because there's not a decision made in relation to that, and it's not a background document to the committee report, or where there is not a need-to-know that's established, and it's not used often in the need-to-know, Chair. So I would also, you know, circulate those provisions to the committee, so they can understand what the need-to-know provisions are at the constitutional.
Thank you, Mrs Kirkman. Councillor Godfrey?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The dividing the issue into two parts, or, let's say, adding an additional investigation into this point, may be sensible to get a complete picture. The motion only calls for a council to stop using NDAs to which relates to committee papers. And I think that is a fairly straightforward decision we should be recommending. Further, looking at the issue of confidentiality agreements or NDAs in relation to other documents that fall outside the committee paper process, I would think it would be sensible, particularly in relation to any indemnity clauses which may be added to those agreements. And I think that is the, we recall the discussion on the 12th of January, was the area of most concern. That is the, while additional confidentiality might be a requirement for the council to protect the council's interests for these non-committee paper matters, imposing that open indemnity was seen as a very unwelcome step. So I think keeping the two, those two issues of committee papers and non-committee papers separate would simplify any further discussions.
I think you're saying yes, please, Mrs Kirkman.
Well, I'm good. I would add in the rider, but it's about the indemnity clause as well as the existence of NDAs.
Mrs Kirkman?
Yeah, perhaps, Chair, that what we could do as part of the agreement of this committee is to agree the terms of what a confidentiality agreement would be, and that there be standard terms that we use in the future as agreed by the committee. And we can add into quarterly reporting the number of times we use those. It might be an annual thing, because it really isn't something that's done very often, but we can report the use of those confidentiality agreements in quarterly or quarterly.
Thank you. I think that's an excellent suggestion. So we have more work to do, councillors. And the last point is that we review the legality, practicality and resource implications of proposals. So whatever proposals we make, we do have to take that into account. I don't think we can do that until we look at what we're proposing. The next question is how we move this forward. I have suggested that it should be best done in a working party, so that we can look at confidential information and consider the various criteria around that, and the reasons for confidentiality, without needing to go into exempt. I'm happy to consider alternative suggestions. Councillor Cras?
I'm not sure it was alternative, but just wanted to share a thought around, to help me understand what the word 'properly' means when consulting with the public. It might be useful to look at previous incidences to determine whether something was done properly or something wasn't done properly. So if I've got a measure against what proper looks like, and if I can use critical incidences from the past, that would be helpful. And I would also like to, like this group, to review any claims that we haven't been open and transparent, to put to bed any lingering doubts that exist, or use those to inform what proper looks like for improvements.
Would that allow us to define proper?
I suggest that one way to guide behaviour is to have a ruler that you can measure yourself against. And if you have something that you can see and measure against, then that helps you determine something proper or improper.
Quite. How do we wish to move this forward? We have a suggestion for a working party. I've also had the suggestion that it should be a big one. Councillor Galloway, I'm sorry.
No, I think it ought to come before the committee. If we need to go into exempt, we need to go into exempt. The whole point of this motion was about openness. And to put it in front of a subcommittee that is not public, open to the public, just doing again what's been said, look, agenda-ising, and go for it.
Debate? Councillor Cras?
I second the agenda-ising and we go for it.
Thank you very much. In which case we proceed to a vote, all those in favour of agenda-ising. For? That's carried. Thank you very much. Do we need to go over the work plan, Mrs Kirkman, so that we can properly have the agenda items?
Chair, a question, please, just reflecting on earlier comments around timing. The committee calendar's next meeting, it's usually in June and July, and I don't have the date to hand that's proposed for the 22/23 calendar. What I heard tonight is that that's not soon enough. And my concern is that with more information, I can't guarantee that members will come to an conclusion at the end of the next meeting either. So, Chair, if you want this on an agenda item, it's the will of the room, therefore, to have an extra meeting of order and governance. And clearly, we have some elections and recasting of committee faces, and I'm just mindful that's bang smack in the middle. So I know I cruchet members entering a very busy time of their own in terms of their availability to come to an extra meeting. I'll be led by you, Chair.
I think the earliest we could hold this meeting would be mid-May. Does that give enough time for the work to be done to prepare materials for this meeting?
We'll get as much to you, Chair, as we can do, you know, in respect of the legality, practicality and resource points, yes. And I'll pull together as much data as I can in order to give members time to consider the papers, and that will be within the five statutes today, Chair, that's required for a committee.
And we're going to take note of Mrs Kirkman's comment that we may not be able to resolve this in one meeting. It may need two, and we are all willing to put that time in. Thank you.
I'm very sorry, Chair, one more. Can I shoot at the single item agenda? So that we're only looking at this matter at the meeting that we set up in mid-May, you wouldn't expect any other business?
Absolutely.
Really clear.
I think that will give us enough to work on. Thank you very much. councillor Crask?
Just with points of doubt, could we imagine some items going into exempt in such a meeting?
Yes. Depending on what we look at.
There could be conversations, particularly if you want to do critical analysis of examples whereby you would need to go into exempt. It depends on the generality of the conversations you have and whether you can keep it out of exempt or not. I think I'll have a clearer idea when we put that bundle together, councillor Crask, in terms of whether that would be necessary. But I think if it's needed for the meeting to be able to have a full and open debate, then it would be worth doing that. I mean, perhaps, Chair, councillor Crask, we're never overwhelmed with members of the public in this meeting.
and councillor Cutler?
Just to help out, I have the draft done.
I don't think your speaker's on, councillor Cutler.
Oh, it's doing, it's flashing and doing all sorts of things. The scheduled audit in the governance committee is not on 21st of July, so that would be fairly late even for a second decision on it. Just to make that point. The other point about avoiding going into exempt, why not find a really old exempt paper and look at that as an example? One that you want to take out of exempt anyway.
Yeah, I don't think that would be the issue. I think if we wanted to talk about some of the GDP opposite provisions or data protection provisions, there could be, I can't preempt everyone, I think the exempt one is the easiest, councillor Cutler, in that respect, for us to be able to, because we're going to talk about a process and processes and frameworks, we're obviously clearly in the remit of audit. So the process and framework for exempt will be fine. I don't think we'd be talking about examples of what would be exempt or not, but examples of what meetings might occur, what could be commercial information, you know, if we want to do critical analysis, some of those are the two examples cited in respect of CWR and RPLC, that could still be information that is related to the day of the meeting, Chair.
Thank you very much. councillor Cutler, did you wish to add anything?
No, I think it's been a very interesting debate.
I agree, it has been interesting. Mrs Graham, do you have a note for the further information that we're going to need?
Yes, thank you, Chair.
I'm very much obliged to you. I think we're going to close the meeting now, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much for your time. Meeting closed at 9:02 PM. Thank you.
Very close, I believe.